All right. It is seven o'clock. We will call to order this regular school board meeting of the Palmyra Eagle Area School District. Tracy, may we have a roll call, please?
Carrie Alice.
Here.
Justin Thomas. Cory Jones.
Here.
Scott Hawke.
Here.
Tara Baldwin.
Here.
Matt Mecca. Amy Wild.
Here.
With six members in attendance, we do have a quorum this evening. The district mission statement is to ensure that students excel with intellect and virtue, inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any changes, additions, subtractions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Public comment. Good. All right. Well, we go on quickly to Mr. Jones.
All right.
Nice to see you tonight.
Good to see you all.
Thank you. So, one of the biggest thing of the Olveas program is clearly defining what bullying is. And I'll kind of talk about that when we get further into some of the reporting forms that the students have submitted. We wanted to have a clear definition of what bullying is so that we can communicate that with the students and the staff, so we know how to properly address it. So, per Olveas, and Olveas is the name of the guy from Norway that started this program back in the day. So, it's Olveas. The W sounds like a V, Norwegian. All right. So bullying is when someone repeatedly and on purpose, repeatedly and on purpose says or does mean or hurtful things to another person who has a hard time defending himself or herself. So throughout our buildings, one of the first things we did is we have some different signage up in the buildings. And I'll talk about these in a little bit more detail, the Panther Principles. But basically, those are the four bullying, the rules that we're going to choose to abide by in our school and address it using this terminology. But all the signage in the building has a Panther Principles, the definition of bullying, the Panther Principles that we abide by. And then there's a QR code on there where students can, if any of you used a QR code before, it's just a little code you can scan. It'll take you right to the anonymous bullying reporting form. So students can do that there. They're posted throughout the building. In the library, there's little table tents with definitions and the QR codes on them there as well. And this is an anonymous form. Students can choose to put their names in there saying that they're the ones reporting, or it can just be anonymous that this is going on. And then it goes directly to an administrator or counselor in the building. And they let, and then we can analyze it and do interviews and such. The class meeting rules, those are posted in all the classrooms. Basically, when you're having a class meeting, they're just rules that the students and staff abide by, just to really have a respectful classroom meeting. I'll switch the Panther Medallion ones on this slide, too. It might be a little easier to read. I did share this with you as well, so you can look through it. And there's some hyperlinks in there for you to view some of the more in-depth reports. But the Panther Medallion is one thing we are doing this year as well. In the middle school, they have, let's see, the middle school is a darker colored one. The high school one is a lighter colored one. But basically, this is just a way for students and staff to recognize each other when they do something that stands out, or just being a kind human, or maybe really embracing some of our Olveas principles. But basically, it's a pretty gaudy medallion that the staff or students will wear or keep for a couple of days, and then they'll take pictures and pass it on. And then those are sent to Ms. Tim and either Ms. Schroeder. And it can be put on our social media sites, et cetera. The Panther note cards is our way of recognizing, our purpose is to recognize every single student we have. So in the office, there are note cards, and every single student has a note card. And staff are charged with taking 10 of those note cards and throughout the course of the year, writing a personalized note to go home with that student. Just a way of recognizing every single student, because a lot of times, it's easy to recognize the ones that always come to mind, and it's easy not to recognize maybe the ones that might be a little aggravating at times. So we really want to just find something good in every student that we have in a small way of just recognizing them. Okay. So the anonymous bullying reporting form, I did a pretty simplistic kind of breakdown of what we've received so far. So this year, we've received 12 reports from the start of the year until the second, when I started putting this together. The number of reports that fit the definition of bullying was five. So kind of when we look at the definition of bullying, do your interviews with students or what's going on, sometimes it's just like a one-off, you said something mean to somebody. And the repeat reports of same situations, we've had one repeat, like a repeated offense. I kind of put a little note here, subjective, non-scientific comparison to last year. The biggest thing I'm seeing this year is a more clear definition of what bullying is. Last year or previous years, it's like everything is bullying. You said something mean to me once, and I'm being bullied at school. Now, yes, it is maybe not nice, but we're really trying to have a clear definition of what bullying is so that staff can address it appropriately, we can, administration can address it appropriately, and just have that common language with each other. Because it's very easy to say that everything is bullying. So we just want to have a clear definition of that.
So what happens to the seven guided forms?
Those were typical, like, it was maybe just like a violation of a school rule or needed to be mediated, like, in a different way. So it wasn't necessarily bullying, it was just a, it was either both of them got into something and like, oh, I'm mad at you, so I'm going to fill out this form. It wasn't necessarily bullying, but it was still something that needed to be addressed administratively, but it wasn't necessarily fitting the definition of bullying. Okay. So the big thing is, especially for the kids and staff, like, well, why on earth would we do this? This is another initiative. You know, we see these things come and go every couple of years. And the biggest thing at the core of the Olveas prevention program is just a culture change in your building and trying to shift to, this is just how we do business, this is how we address this. It's not a fad, it's not, it's not a box kit or something. You're really just trying, it's kind of, if you're familiar with PBIS at all, it's kind of for us, taking a little bit of place of the positive behavior interventions. And we're really trying to address the bullying piece of this and just change that culture of our building. So the first thing is health consequences. Through the training, they identify that students are bullied. I won't verbatim read all this, but you can see students that are bullied experience quite a bit more health problems, you know, anxiety, abdominal pains, sleeping problems, feeling unhappy, being more depressed than students that are not bullied. You want to, we want to have a healthy school climate, and this is really a systems, a change approach for all students, not just students who are bullied. Because even if you have a student that's bullied, there is the person that's doing the bullying, and as educators, we need to be teaching them to, you know, what this is, what you're doing, and maybe some replacement things. And sometimes if we delve deeper into, into what bullying is, a lot of times, it's a manifestation of something going on with that student that is doing the bullying. So a lot of times, that comes out as well. The biggest thing with this, well, not the biggest, but a big part of it is being preventative and not always just reactive in response to bullying. You're really trying to focus on that cultural change, just, this is just how we do business, and it's okay to call things what they are and say, what you're doing is just not right. And this is research-based. This started in Norway, and Clemson University in South Carolina is the big hub for Olveas. We kind of got pulled into this, that sounds terrible, but we got exposed to this. Elkhorn is doing it, and they reached out to Ms. Cooks from our counselor, and kind of got the ball ruined with that. We decided this is something that we'd like to embrace. Why? For the larger community, a lot of times, you know, sometimes these things, these situations don't happen in silos. You know, we want to have better and stronger partnerships with the individual, the community, the classroom, and the school. So the classroom component is those weekly, what's called classroom meetings. And it's generally, our committee comes up with lessons throughout the whole year, and it's not necessarily some canned linear lesson, but maybe we're going to focus in November, where we're focusing on kind acts or a different character trait. And just trying to teach that, some of the social skills and being a human skills, a little bit more directly. Having parents at the center of all this is definitely important, because, you know, some, sometimes these behaviors are learned behaviors at home, and being in constant communication with families at the center of it, and really trying to address this in the community, in the community is good as well. One of the things, as we get further down the road, is we've, we've reached out and done work the library in town, so they're using some of the same verbiage and being part of some of our meetings. But some districts, they have the rules and stuff posted all over in different businesses in town, so just trying to expand that language of what, what it is. Okay. So we've done a lot of work this year, this summer, our bullying prevention coordinating committee, we assembled and received two days of training in Elkhorn. I'm the program coordinator for our building. We have our teaching staff that are on board as the core team, our school counselor. We have a parent that's an employee in the building as well. Our community representative is Ms. Guest from the Palmyra Library. And I'll talk about some of the things she's really been a big part of with our kickoff week this year. So we went and did our two-day training and getting all solid on the Olveas system and being confident as much as we could be in those two days. And then we came and did in-service in August, where we trained all the middle school and high school teachers and staff in Olveas. And really, what that encompassed is the, really training them in the definition of bullying, what it looks like, and what the class meetings would look like. And we did some simulations on how to conduct a class meeting. Because one of these things, the class meetings can be a bit unnatural, especially if, you know, you're used to, your class is set up the same way every day, and now we're asking you to get in a circle and talk about your feelings. That can be a little unnatural, so we did a lot of training around how to hold those class meetings and, and being human in those moments, not necessarily just the director of the classroom, but being a part of this with the students. So it's, it's natural for some, it's not as natural for others, but I have to say, our staff has really, really been good at really trying to embrace the language of this program. What has been done this year? We've posted building signage throughout. We have a building schedule aligned to accommodate the weekly and bi-weekly, weekly for the middle school, every Wednesday, they have an Olveas lesson, bi-weekly for the high school, because of the different career planning and things, it's not as frequent in the high school, they get a lot on their plates. During the month of September, all students, we did have a weekly meeting leading up to our kickoff week, where we had lessons to address and explain what each of the Panther Principles are. We will not bully others, we will try to help students who are bullied, we will try to include students who are left out, and if we know that somebody is being bullied, we will tell an adult at school and an adult at home. The most fun part of this, this year, was our kickoff week, and I don't know how familiar you are with kind of the different activities we did. But Elkhorn, we want to do a little bit better than what they did, so we did something every day. They did one event, we decided we're going to do a different thing every day during the lunch period, is leading up to, or throughout that kickoff week. So the librarian, Ms. Guest, or Guest, I can't remember, she has some makerspace dollars to spend. So she purchased some screen printing materials, and on Monday, it was Blue Shirt Day, students, we bought a bunch of T-shirts, she paid for the ink and the screen printing stuff. Students could pay a dollar for a shirt and print their own shirt in the cafeteria. It was kind of a really neat, interactive thing that they were able to do right there in the cafeteria, they made a shirt for a buck. And it's changed the culture on it. It's just for Blue Shirt Day. And now throughout the month of November, on Wednesdays, we're wearing our blue shirts because it's bullying prevention month. On Tuesday, we did a mix-it-up day at lunch. We had some different incentives with chips and candy, and I know that's, we're not supposed to do that, but we did, in the lunchroom, where, you know, it encouraged students to sit somewhere different for the day, interact with some different people during the day, during that lunch period. On Wednesday, we did the Random Mexican Kindness Challenge. We basically had a bunch of random Mexican kindness in a box, students picked them. They were so excited, they did it all only in the lunchroom. I really wanted them to do it throughout the building and then, and then hashtag it to whatever media site they use, either Twitter or Facebook, PE Olveas, but they all just did it in the lunchroom. So, the learning curve, but they were doing it, and they were, they were involved. We had kids participating. Thursday was a really big day. We had Scott Bakovich come in. He's a motivational speaker out of California. Basically, did a Google search on speakers, and he came up and went through the reviews, kind of did a phone interview with them, and it seemed like it'd be a good fit. He came in, and he did a really nice job. I don't know if any of your, if your kids go here, you know, came home and maybe talked about what, what that was all about. It was, it was a lot of fun. He did a great job. Not only did he do a seminar, like a keynote for the high schoolers and the middle schoolers, then he did some breakout sessions in the library, working on some different individual workshops with, with some select kids. So that was a lot of fun. And then on Friday, the pledge, basically, we have a big pledge, pledge sign, it's now hung up in the library, but kids signing that they said they're going to, they're going to embrace this, and they really want to help change the culture of our building. So each year, we're going to get a new banner, have the kids sign it, and we'll hang it up, and it'll kind of be like a history, you know, over the course of the years, kind of just seeing how, what we're doing here. We got a lot of press out of this, thanks to Ms. Stephanie. We had a lot of the media in here. It was just a lot of fun, and that's all I can say, it was just a really good time. So it was, it was an exciting week, the kids were excited. The work now is maintaining that enthusiasm with the, because now you're kind of just, you're doing your lessons, you're addressing the bullying when it happens. And the biggest thing is people are like, well, we don't have bullying here. When actually, we have a lot of kids that come to school every day, it's difficult for them. And they need to know that we know how to address it. And a lot of times, it might not be in address, because the teachers didn't, maybe haven't had the training to necessarily know how to address bullying going on, other than, because historically, it could have just been, hey, you need to knock this off. This is, we're really trying to teach those replacement skills to be, you know, just good humans. The middle schoolers, the presentation was just awesome with the middle school, is they really bought into it and had a lot of excitement around it. Scott shared a story about a kid at one of his, he was speaking somewhere, and he basically, this little kid took charge and like called all the students, he said, "Ball!", and all the kids in the gymnasium balled up for a picture. This is a story he was telling. Well, at the end of the middle school one, somebody yelled at it, and they all got together and did a selfie, so it was a lot of fun. I'm not going to go, I'll let you click on the hyperlinks to look at the reports that we're starting to dissect as a team. Well, I accidentally clicked this, so we'll give you a little snapshot. Basically, it's got some, just graphs and charts, kind of disaggregating out all the data of, you know, how many males responded, females responded, how many in each grade. One nice thing is we got a lot of, we pretty much had 97% participation in this survey. The students took a whole Wednesday, well, not a whole Wednesday, but the, their time on a Wednesday during resource, and, and completed this survey. And as much as they have to sit in front of computers clicking buttons, I really think they, they, they gave their best and took it seriously. All right. So, the Olveas Bullying Prevention Program is for all students, not just the ones who are bullied, but for the ones that bully others. And, and a big piece is those bystanders. You know, I was a bystander, a bystander in high school. I saw bullying going on, I didn't like how it made me feel, I can only imagine how it made others feel, but I didn't have the confidence or the, or the skill set at that time to call it what is it, what it is. So this is really trying to get those bystanders, because ultimately, the kids' peers are the ones that are really going to drive this. You know, if me saying it, it's lame, if their friends say it, you know, maybe I can get on board with this. And lastly, the Olveas Bullying Prevention Program is not, it's not a curriculum, it's not a box kit, a set of lessons, this is a team working throughout the year, developing different lessons that we see would be applicable and helpful for our building. It's not conflict resolution or peer mediation, it's not a classroom management technique, it's not an anger management program, suicide prevention program. And this is the harder one to swallow, it's not a short-term effort. A lot of times, I know in education, it's, well, Nick Jones is going to be gone in a year, so Olveas will be gone in a year. This is really trying to change the culture of our building. This is how we do business, so regardless of Nick Jones being here, or whoever else being here, you know, this is just how we take care of business. So it's, it's a, it's a long-term effort, and moving forward, I see a lot of good things. Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Is it, is not, is it just for the higher grades, or is there elementary version?
So, it's, the funny thing is, in the manual, the first page says, "Not recommended to start this in high school." Well, that's where we ended up starting it, because our building decided that this is an important issue we want to tackle. We would like to see maybe some of the successes that we're experiencing up here, where we could bring that into the elementary, so that when they come up to us, this isn't a new awkward thing. Because I, I'm going to be honest, selling this to our juniors and seniors, even our sophomores, it can be a hard sell. And it really depends on how we're presenting it in the classroom and our buy-in. Our middle schoolers, actually, that perfect age, they worked really well for them. So if they're getting some of that exposure and calling it what it is down in the lower grades, and coming up, we're hoping it bleeds out up there.
I was going to say, when you were talking about the short-term effort, like, my grand got asked to be an upstander.
Okay.
When he was in eighth grade, and he went to a training, missed a whole day of school, and then they never did another thing ever.
Yeah.
But then I heard my nephew, when he was playing with the older kid, he's like, "It's okay, mom, he's an upstander." You know, so I know they're using new language, and they're getting, you know, that.
Yeah, and it's, it really, the long-term effort hinges on the leadership in the building to keep that sustained effort, because I've, I've been in the classroom, I know how it is, you just kind of ride stuff out sometimes. So to sustain this, we need to just make this a part of kind of how we do business. Excellent. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Yeah. Yep.
All right. Committee reports. Tech Committee, Dr. Bloom.
I can take that one, and I'll be very brief. Technology Committee held their first meeting of the school year on October 30th. The second, or next meeting, is actually scheduled for Monday of next week. Basically, with relatively new IT staff, one of the things we wanted to do is kind of get a lay of the land. We really view this as a means for two-way communication, teachers and staff members to the IT department and vice versa, relative to issues, initiatives, those kinds of things. The committee has representatives from both teaching and administrative staff in all three buildings. It's a standing committee, it meets on a monthly basis and will throughout the rest of the school year, so we think this will be a good conduit, not only for exchanging information, but also for surveying or polling staff to find out what their professional development needs are around the use of and implementation of technology in their classrooms and in their buildings.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Onto curriculum and policy, please.
We met last Thursday, and I don't know if any of you have any time, you know, spare time, but to read the reports of Kathy and Tori is, you know, just phenomenal to see all the things that they're doing. And, you know, knowing three or four years ago, this wasn't being done. It's, it's encouraging to see that the two of them are just on top of it and doing a tremendous, tremendous job. On the agenda tonight, we have a couple of things. One is the approval of the McGraw-Hill fourth, K through four social studies curriculum as presented. It's $21,000, and they've gone through that and feel confident that this is a good step for us. Then we're also looking at the, Matt had a question regarding the use of personal communication last month, and there was an addition to that, to that policy, which they added the word. They added the verbiage, following types of student or other district records cannot be on your personal devices. That was missing when he brought it up last week and last month. So basically, you know, you can use your personal device at school, but you can't have student or other district records regarding social security numbers of students, or driver's license numbers of students or staff, any, any personal information of students and staff. So that's on the, for second, second reading, and then the first reading of the committee's policy and diploma referral policy. We're still doing the volunteer processing, which we had 121 applicants that wanted to be a part of the volunteers, which means they qualify, they were asking to qualify to go on field trips with the, with their kids or with the students and staff. And of the 121, we only had one denied, which is a good step forward with the plan that we have in place. And I feel confident in the, in the plan that's in place, that these 120 people have, I'll trust them with my kids. Nurse, the nurse Lisa's working on the P E A S D bloodborne pathogens plan, and they're going to be submitting that to the committee in the next couple of months, but something to look forward to ahead. I think that's about it.
Thank you very much. Building and grounds, please.
Met this evening, let's see, we have the flooring in Eagle, the repair, replace will not take place until next summer due to time constraints. We have some cameras around the building here that need to be replaced, so we're, Rich is working on a new and improved 360-degree camera, so that'll be taking place. Some new 100% environmental biodegradable cleaning products going to be starting to be used, and we have a new custodian at the Palmyra Elementary, who was actually a former student here, or current, current student here, sorry. So that's exciting to have one of our own on board. That's it.
Thank you. Finance.
We met earlier tonight. Obviously, Sharon is not here or was not here. We did briefly, excuse me, discuss the district long-term We did briefly, excuse me, discuss the district long-term debt and trying to refinance that. So we are going to wait for Sharon to get back to the finance committee with some more specifics before we bring that to the board in full. Again, we discussed a little bit about the budget and how tight it was. Not redoing the floor in Eagle currently, due to those constraints, may free up some money there for some other things as we move throughout the year. And I believe that was the extent of it for now.
That was good, thank you. And PR.
Okay, tonight, Dr. Bloom shared with us quite a thick packet of correspondence that he sent out to all the coaches and all of our kids who received recognition in the trailways of conference recognition. Stephanie attended the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association banquet this past week, where she received, not the district, Stephanie received awards for our school calendar, our community newsletter, and the promotional video that Stephanie put together, yes. So thank you again, Stephanie, for that. At the conference, Stephanie attended some breakout sessions and got some great information on some additional things that we can be doing as a district to make sure that our information online and everywhere else is easily accessible by everyone. The newsletter is, our first newsletter for this school year is just about ready to go, should be going out probably next week, and Steph was able to sell all of the ads in that, which is a wonderful thing. Honor and educator, there have been four nominations so far submitted for this school year, and that should be ready to go about mid-December. And I think that is about it for PR.
Very good, thank you much. Administrators' reports, we're a little lean on administrators tonight, so we will buy that one. Consent agenda will be handled as a singular motion and vote. Do we hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved, and our thanks to Lisa and Dermot for their donation of a piano to the high school. Action items, action item A, consider approval of second reading of revised policy seven-five-three-zero-point-zero-two, staff use of personal communication devices.
Motion to approve consideration of second reading of revised policy seven-five-three-zero-point-o-two.
Second.
Super. Questions, comments about this one? I think it satisfies the question that we had last month? Good, all right, any others? All those in favor of the approval of the second reading of revised policy seven-five-three-zero-point-zero-two, staff use of personal communication devices, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item B, consider approval of the first reading of the following revised policies, sub-one-zero-one-five-five committees and sub-two-five-four-six-zero-point-zero-one diploma deferral.
Motion to approve first reading of the policies listed.
Steve, these are just updates that came from Neola.
So the committee policy zero-one-five-five, actually, when we went through the Neola process, when we went through the Neola policy process, the Neola consultant took verbatim our policy. So it was one of maybe a half a dozen that they actually liked our language. In the meantime, the policy lists Technology Committee and the Educational Foundation. Issues with those have arisen in that, unlike the other standing committees of the board, the technology was a board member as a representative, so we need to eliminate that from the policy. As far as the Educational Foundation, it's our understanding that they're going to be, lack of a better term, going out of business. They will no longer be an active foundation. The CISA rep and the WASB delegate are done already by board action when you reorganize, so it doesn't need to be in policy. So, when I went to the WASD drive-in, I gave this to Kirk Strang and got pre-legal advice, which was basically, go through your policy vetting process, which, as you know now, for revisions, we go to two readings. So this is the first reading for you to consider striking that particular section that includes those four areas of that particular policy. It would leave reference to all the other standing committees, building and grounds, finance, public relations, and curriculum and policy in place. The second one that's listed there, related to the diploma deferral, we from, and Tracy will attest to this, from day one going through this process, with this particular policy had listed the age for which a student may continue to receive services as twenty-two. The state and federal guidelines are age of twenty-one. So that's basically an editorial change to eliminate or to change the age of twenty-two for special education services to the age of twenty-one, which is what's included in state and federal law. So it's a cosmetic change, however, it's important enough in nature that we want to go through the two-month first and second read process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions about those two? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the first reading of the following revised policies, zero-one-five-five and five-four-six-zero-point-zero-one, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item C, consider approval of consultant agreement for learning for all initiative as presented.
Motion to approve consultant agreement for learning for all initiative as presented.
Steve, what are we doing with Mr. Blake?
Poise, Blake Poise is the district administrator to the St. Francis School District. He had actually done the learning for all grading initiative, if you will, in three different school districts. A number of our staff members had previously worked with Blake in other positions that they also had had. We conferred with Blake four different times, beginning in May of last year. We referenced him in the August Welcome Back to School Inservice Day, and then he spoke about an hour and a half or so with our staff during the October, during a part of the October Teacher Inservice Day. We feel pretty confident now, moving forward, that we have the means within our staff to move forward, but, you know, Blake needs to be compensated for his time. I did budget for that using Title II dollars, so it doesn't come from local general fund. So it's Title II dollars.
What was the dollar amount?
I budgeted three thousand. He's basically on a time basis, keeps an hourly basis. I think he's around eight-hundred-and-fifty or nine-hundred dollars right now.
And is he expected back, or are we, he's kind of on call right now?
He's on call as needed. We possibly may bring him back in January or in April, more likely, kind of towards the end of the year. But thank you for the question.
Any questions about this one, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consultant agreement for learning for all initiative as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item D, consider approval of McGraw-Hill K through fourth grade social studies curriculum purchase as presented.
Motion to approve McGraw-Hill K through fourth grade social studies curriculum purchase as presented.
Questions about this one? What's the plan for the upper grades?
So, last year, we actually purchased grade five through eleven in all the AP courses. So this is actually a little bit in kind of reverse order of what might be typical. This now gets us, though, through grades K through twelve, in essence, in the district, and brings some closure to this particular subject area.
All right, thank you. Questions about this one? All those in favor of approving the McGraw-Hill K through fourth grade social studies curriculum purchase as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Action item E, consider approval of Panther Boys Hoops Club as recognized district support organization.
Move to approve Panther Boys Hoops Club as a recognized district support organization.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the Panther Boys Hoops Club as a recognized district support organization, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And action item F, consider approval of PE band boosters as a recognized district support organization.
Move to approve PE band boosters as recognized district support organization.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of approval of the PE band boosters as a recognized district support organization, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. On to Dr. Bloom.
Thank you, let me go back to the last two action items and just say, again, we're in this transition with new policy protocols and procedures relative to support organizations or booster clubs, parent organizations, et cetera. I just want to thank those groups for complying with the expectations that we had set forth in policy. We're getting there. It's nice to see the responsiveness of folks who are doing really good things on behalf of our students. The booster organizations provide much-needed dollars and support for areas that, quite frankly, we're just not able to budget adequately for. So all of these organizations, whether they're athletic or other extracurricular, are very valuable to our operations and help support us doing really good things for students. Rest of my report. If you saw the correspondence, you know, we had very successful middle and high school athletic seasons. I'd be remiss, obviously, if I didn't mention the success of our cross-country team, and in particular, our girls for making it to state. We also had a number of volleyball players make trailways all-conference recognition, as is true also for the football team. Our equestrian team finished fifth out of twelve teams recently at a state meet held in Madison. Actually, it was the same weekend as the state cross-country meet. Again, very humble, but Stephanie deserves our recognition for her work. She's going to be really mad after tonight with all the kudos that she's gotten, but it's well-deserved. In case you didn't necessarily see it, one of our students, actually several students, participated in a logo contest that the Eagle Police Department had sponsored, and they were soliciting student artwork for a new logo, for their badge and for their department. And one of our students, Jenna Johnson, was selected. Her rendering is just outstanding. It's phenomenal, and as a non-art person, I actually have no idea how people do this kind of thing. But it's stunning, obviously, and well-deserved recognition to Jenna for her talents and her willingness to put her hat in the ring. Ultimately, her rendition was selected for the logo. Also, Stephanie had given us a very brief update about the nature trail sign. I wanted to thank Mike Hoff and the students that he had worked with for their construction of that particular sign. And it sounds like we're expanding a network of some support with Mr. John Knute, who teaches at Pamira Elementary and the Department of Natural Resources, maybe collaborating on making sure that things that are posted to that sign withstand the weather. So that's a nice, nice thing. State Education Conference will be the middle of January, again, in Milwaukee, the seventeenth through the nineteenth. You've probably already received in the mail your hard copy of Wisconsin School News, and perhaps even a number of email solicitations. If you're interested in attending, please let Tracy or I know, and we'll get you registered. There's an early bird registration for the conference. Scott is your board delegate as of today. I have yet to receive any resolutions, have, you probably didn't check mail today either, but as is typical, it'll be in tomorrow's mail, the day after our board meeting. Nonetheless, we'll get the resolutions to you for you to take a look at, but if you'd like to attend, please let us know. Spring election, two thousand and eighteen, coming up. There are two current board seats that will be open. There are a number of dates I included in the electronic packet for you that are things to be aware of. There's a publication notice on or before November the twenty-eighth. We need to put in the newspaper notice of the election and the seats that are vacant. The non-candidacy for any incumbent deadline is December the twenty-second. Deadline for anyone to appear on the ballot is January the second. Now, those deadlines fall during winter break, so it becomes a little bit dicey sometimes. However, anyone who's interested can secure the forms from the district office, either Tracy or myself, or they are available also online as well. Because there are two seats, if we have more than five candidates that are interested, there would be a primary in February. Otherwise, if not, the regular spring election is the first Tuesday in April, which this year, twenty-eighteen, next year would be April the third. The other thing I would mention, again, you've approved the consultant agreement with Blake Poise. He's done a really nice job sharing his experiences with us. I think we're pretty well situated in moving this initiative forward. It's a very healthy and very rich conversation. As we've had this conversation, where the number of our teachers who reside elsewhere have made contact with colleagues or teachers of their own children, if they don't happen to have their children come to Pamira Eagle, and come to find out there are other districts that are doing this initiative as well. I know Amy actually shared, a member of their physical education department that would be happy to meet with some of our folks to talk about that process. So the networking continues, and again, it's one of those in terms of, you know, who do you cross paths with and who can help enrich our dialogue and our conversation here. Dave Schultz from Kelman did notify me, I think I had updated you, that we had put in a proposal, our proposal to present at the school business manager. February conference was selected, so we're going to tell the story into the fire about our experience with the fire at Eagle Elementary School. That presentation will be Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, from twelve-thirty to one-thirty. So Dave will share kind of the technical side, and I'll share kind of the human nature side to it, the human story part to it. And I think that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Announcements or comments? Anyone have anything this evening?
I would just like to mention the Athletic Booster Club Holiday Bazaar this weekend on Saturday, the eighteenth, from nine to three. This is the biggest fundraiser for the sports boosters each year, and Boosters does just a phenomenal job for our kids. So I really encourage everyone to stop up. Tons of fantastic handcrafted items, everything is handcrafted. None of the booths have items that, you know, are packaged and sold. It's all handcrafted items, so definitely recommend everyone to stop up. There'll be cream puffs as well from our Boy Scouts, so.
No Blizzard this year?
No, shh, no, no.
Yeah.
No.
Was that two years ago, that it was a Blizzard?
No, no, last year was two years ago, was snow.
And then last year was real warm, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, good luck, I hope they do well. Yeah. Otherwise, it's cream puffs for lunch on Monday. No, it's not. All right, upcoming meetings and events, tech committee, three-thirty PM on Monday, November twentieth. Curriculum and policy, five PM on Thursday, December seventh. Building and grounds, five-thirty on Tuesday, December twelfth. Finance, six PM. Public relations, six-thirty PM, and regular board meeting at seven PM on Tuesday, December twelfth. The board will now consider a motion to move to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section one-nine-point-eight-five-one-C to wit to consider employment or performance evaluation data of public employees over which the board exercises responsibility. Tracy, maybe we'll have a roll call vote. Tracy, Amy, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Carrie Ellis.
Yes.
Justin Thomas.
Yes.
Cory Jones.
Yes.
Tara Bowman.
Yes.
Kat Ecker. Amy Wild.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Good to see you. Have a good night. Thank you, Ryan.